Meeting of the Lowell School Committee to Order. Please rise and join me in honoring America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Again, good evening, welcome. Merry Christmas to everyone, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah. I know we also have some up there do committee people here, want to welcome them back. Thank you for being here. Let us begin with the roll call, please.
Mr. Dougherty? Ms. Laraba?
Here.
Mr. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mayor Milonazzo?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present, thank you. The Chair would like to recognize Mr. Leahy. I believe we'd like to move, suspend the rules if we could, to move item number five, Building Naming Opportunity for Hugh Barnes to the top of the agenda. It's my understanding we have family members here and as a courtesy, so motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Conway, to suspend the rules in order to take up item number five at the beginning of the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose is the vote. The Chair would recognize Mr. Leahy.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the last meeting, the Building Name, Naming Opportunity Committee met. Unfinished business on that, from that meeting was for a dedication plaque at the high school for Mr. Hugh Barnes, dedicated employee of the City of Lowell School Department for many years. At the last meeting, we took the motion up to get the proper paperwork filled out by the family. Paperwork has been filled out and submitted. Tonight, we ask that we pass the motion that we dedicate a plaque at the high school in Mr. Barnes' memory for his many years of service to the school system. And his family is here tonight. Also, over the last few months, I've had the opportunity to work with his daughter, Susan. Susan's here tonight, Susan Nealon, her sister Carol Marchand, her husband, and their brother, Richard Barnes, isn't here tonight, but the three of them asked that we pass this motion to dedicate a plaque for their father. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion being offered by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Laraba. Any comments, questions? Thank you for bringing this forward. Roll call, please.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven ayes passes.
Seven ayes, thank you. On behalf of the Administration and my colleagues, I'd like to thank your dad for his years of service. Thank you. Ms. Lar-
Can we like to also talk to the microphone?
Come to the microphone, please. Thank you so much. We're, this is televised, so.
Okay, thank you. It's really, really means a lot to us, and we really appreciate that you did take this into consideration and that you did pass it. It was his personal pleasure to serve the City of Lowell and the School Department for over thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Laraba.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as we are under suspension of rules, I do notice that Kendra Bauer is here on behalf of the trip request to go to London, England, Paris. I wondered if we could take that out of order.
What item number is that, Ms. Laraba?
I'm sorry, number three.
Number three. Thank you. Okay, so it's the Lowell High School students, fifteen to twenty students, along with teacher chaperones Kendra Bauer, Deborah Fowler, and Thomas Thornton, to travel to London, England, and Paris from Friday, February seventeenth, two thousand twelve, returning on Saturday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve. The total cost of the trip will be incurred by each student traveling. The cost for two substitute teachers will not exceed two hundred dollars and will be funded by the Lowell High School individual school budget. What's the wish of the committee? Move approval by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven ayes passes.
Thank you.
Mayor, while we're here, can we take the number four as well? We might as well do both those at the same time, if that's okay.
Okay, sure. The eighth grade wing, middle school students, along with staff Christina Hanes, Danielle Dutton Collins, Catherine Clark, and Jeanette Joyce, request permission to travel to Washington, DC from Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve, returning on Friday, June first, two thousand twelve. The total cost of the trip will be incurred by each student traveling. Fundraising activities will be held throughout the school year to defray the cost of the trip for all participating students. There is no cost to the School Department budget, no substitute teachers are needed. Move approval by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Leary. Comments, questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven ayes passes.
Thank you. Go back now to the regular agenda. Thank you. First item on the regular agenda, Special Order of Business, Spotlight on Excellence in Recognition of Community Service. The Chair recognizes Madam Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. This evening, we wanted to take a special moment to recognize the members of this committee that have served the youth of Lowell so extremely well. And so, I have asked the coordinator of the TV studio, Jack Pennard, to provide us with a video of your service and thanks to you for your incredible years with us. So to Mayor Milonazzo, to Ms. Allison Laraba, to Ms. Jackie Dougherty, and to Mr. John Leahy, we pay you tribute for your service, and we thank you for all of your instincts and passion for this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
In addition to a long and distinguished career as a city councillor, Mayor James Milonazzo has brought his knowledge and caring to the School Committee during this most recent term. Please join us now in offering our heartfelt thanks to him for his tradition of excellence in public service. Allison Laraba brought her caring and concern for the children of Lowell to the School Committee in January of two thousand ten. Today, we take the opportunity to extend our thanks for her distinguished service to the community over the past two years. Since two thousand four, Jackie Dougherty has been an activist and leader on Lowell School Committee. Her pursuit of excellence in Lowell schools has become the trademark of an illustrious career. Jackie has been willing to think creatively and tackle tough issues while remaining able to build a consensus and move our district forward even in tough economic times.
It's not always easy to speak out and say things that make people angry or uncomfortable. And whether I'm speaking out to the mayor, or I'm speaking out to the superintendent of schools, the bottom line for me in every issue is how is it impacting the children in the classroom? And how is it leading to our goal of excellent schools? Because I believe it is our goal mutually, excellent schools. But I also feel very strongly that this issue of respect and discipline, it's the foundation that all these other things are going to happen. I've been a workshop leader and volunteer parent in the classroom, teaching children how to write. And that's been a consistent effort I've had over the last four years. What that's allowed me is I've seen firsthand the challenges our teachers face in teaching our children. I believe we are all responsible for the quality of education in this city. We are all accountable for the quality of schools and the education our children get. And as a School Committee member, I hold myself accountable to do what it takes to provide the best quality education I can for our children. We have a number of success stories out there, and I think that part of the role of a School Committee is to make sure those stories are told. What happened here tonight demonstrates what it is that makes Lowell such a great community. We have wonderful, talented children and equally talented, committed adults working in our education system, and I am proud to be part of this community. Thank you. The efforts we've been doing, and we have put so much effort in math in the last, you know, couple of years, in terms of the curriculum and the instruction, that it's really paying off at both ends. We got twenty-nine percent more students moved into proficient and advanced, while eighteen percent, eighteen percent moved up from failing across the district. So it's not just, I mean, the good news on the sixth and eighth grade math scores is great, but overall, we've seen really the top is moving up as well as the bottom. I just, I think it's very encouraging. I think our schools are making progress. I see it not only in test scores, but in our focus on really meeting children where they are and bringing them to the next level of achievement. I think that we are the world here in Lowell, and our children benefit in a way that you can't measure on a standardized test, what it means to go to school with children from so many different cultural and ethnic backgrounds. But the bottom line for me is always going to be about excellence in the schools. And in the last two years, every vote I've taken, every initiative I've made, has been focused on doing that, doing a better job of educating our students. There has to be work done at higher levels of government. I currently serve as the Chair of the Urban Division of the Mass Association of School Committees. I'm working very closely with that association and our legislators at the State House to look for reforms that will help us in terms of the mandates put upon us without funding, and just things that make sense for kids that we're not being allowed to do.
First, Jackie, I want to congratulate you on eight years of exemplary service, serving the City of Lowell and its schoolchildren with the Lowell Public Schools. I first met you in two thousand three when we both were running for Lowell School Committee, and you did an excellent job communicating your thoughts and ideas on where the Lowell Public Schools should be. I think with your work, working with you in many, many different areas that we've had, you've had a successful eight years. And I wish you and your family unbelievable success and happiness and good health going forward.
So really, when I look at my role on the School Committee, first I see myself as a parent. I look at all decisions from the perspective of a parent and what it means to the education of all our children. Secondly, I see myself as an educator, someone who's been in front of the classroom, who understands the challenges our teachers face. And thirdly, I see myself as an activist, someone who's actively working to make our public schools better. That step of communicating that this investment in the education of our children is essential for all of us, not just parents, but anybody who lives in the city. It's the future of our city, it's the future of our country.
In January of two thousand two, the Lowell School Committee ushered in a new era of focused leadership when John Leahy began his first term as an elected School Committee member. From the beginning, the passion and caring John shared with his own family was evident, and it quickly spread to his new, larger family of all Lowell schoolchildren.
My wife and I were talking, and we, we really wanted to get involved with our children's education. We have three children, two are presently in the school system right now, first grader and a preschool. So we sat down, we talked about it, and we decided that if we're going to get involved, then this would be a good way to be involved. This is how we wanted to have an active voice in our, in the education of our children and all the children in the City of Lowell. Once you find you do this job, you really love it, because to go out to the schools and to see the change that you can make, and the smile on the, smiles on the children's faces, it really makes the job worthwhile.
John has always kept his focus on our children, their parents, and their teachers, and continually asked, how are our schools working for them?
I've been around some schools, and I've tried to listen, and I've tried to hear what the concerns are from the parents, and especially from the staff, because they're, they're there every day, and they know how the system works, how to improve it. What I can tell you is that your issues are my issues, that they're the committee's issues. So we're here to improve the school system in Lowell and make it the best school system that it can be in the state.
By actively listening and visiting schools on a regular basis, John showed us how to solve problems.
You, you call people, you talk to people, you go in firsthand, and you see what's happening. That's the way to do it, I believe. But, you know, just listening to your kids and listening to parents and people out there, you know, you get a lot of little things done.
His desire to ensure that each and every child had an outstanding education and a facility in which to have that education was, was just, was relentless. He was tenacious in trying to achieve excellence every day.
We've got to have sidewalks for the kids to walk on. We've got to have crosswalks painted. We've got to have people out there to ensure the safety of the student. It's almost like a continuing, like a maintenance schedule for ourselves, to make sure that we're always running efficiently and, and serving our students the best that we can. But we should also take a look at all the schools and see where all the kids are coming from. They do have to walk longer distances now, so we want to make it as safe as possible. We want to show our support of the high school in any way we can help. That's one of our major accomplishments here in Lowell, that the quality of instruction, the professional development, the teacher academy. We ask for our teachers to be highly qualified. If you ever have any concerns, you know that you can always call me. If I don't know the answer, I try to get the answer that day and get back to you. My parents always taught us the value of hard work and commitment to the community. Most of all, they've taught us the importance of helping others. So my wife Joan and I, when we decided that we're going to stick with the Lowell Public Schools, send our kids to Lowell Public Schools, our three children, Delane, Madeline, and Jack, they like to hear their name over the mic. So we've decided we're going to educate them in Lowell Public Schools. And we've been very active, and that's the key. And we try to, we try to, to express that to the parents, you know, please get involved in your school. So I've tried to do that over my years on the School Committee. I've tried to be a strong voice for you and your children. Again, I enjoy this immensely. I enjoy being able to be out and to visit the schools, to see the work that our students, our teachers are doing firsthand. I love doing this job. I love working with my colleagues. It's the most rewarding job that I can imagine.
Hey, John, I just wanted to say congratulations for ten years on the Lowell School Committee. You did an outstanding job, and I personally want to thank you for making my six years a lot of fun and with a lot of value.
My colleagues and I, we put in a lot of time, but I don't know what else I would like to do. I mean, this is the best job I could have.
Thank you very much to Channel Twenty-two, the Lowell High School, Jack Pennard, thank you so much. Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank you for your leadership with the Lowell Public School for the past two years.
You're welcome.
You've done an outstanding job, and it's been a challenging job, not only the economic times, but when we had to go through some major difficulties in changing our leadership, you, you did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it, and I appreciate being your vice chair. It was a lot of fun, and thank you.
Thank you.
I also just, I want to thank Allison Laraba. I was up there, I did a video with your name too, it didn't make it, because the only word I used, Allison, was, I want one word for you, and that's cognizant. So they finally edited that out. But I want to thank you for your service. You did a great job, and I wish you well in your future endeavors. To Ms. Dougherty, my neighbor in the Highlands, what can I say? You did an outstanding job working for the children of the City of Lowell. You were passionate, and we're going to miss you being on the committee, and I wish you luck going forward as well. And last but certainly not least, probably my best friend on the committee without a doubt, Johnny Leahy. The past six years, working with him, have been, you know, just a lot of fun, a lot of laughs. We, you know, bicker back and forth when we don't vote on the same vote, making sure we make fun of each other, interrupting each other before we're getting ready to speak or whenever our motions are coming up. You know, John has been a tireless worker for the children of Lowell, something that's going to be missed in the city. And I, and I look forward to supporting Johnny Leahy running for City Council in two years. I think he'll do an outstanding job as a councillor. And I also want to thank Bud Caulfield, Mayor Caulfield, for his twenty-four years of service. What can I say? That's, without a doubt, has been exemplary. Again, all of you, thank you very much for your service. Thank you very much for being a colleague of mine. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to thank my colleagues that will not be with us on the School Committee in the next two years. To you, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I was born and brought up in this city and, and worked here all my life. And I've known, through that time, I've known many mayors. And Jim, to be quite frank with you, I rank you as, as being one of the very best.
Thank you, Mr. Conway.
And, you know, I think Lowell was extremely fortunate to have you as, as mayor. And I thank you for the love of the, of the City of Lowell and your dedication to its people. And I wish you and, and your wife Annabelle, and your mom and dad, and your daughter, the very best going forward.
Thank you, Jim.
And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conway.
And I also want to thank Jackie Dougherty, who has been sitting here with me in the, in the last four years, and, and when I first came on, certainly helped me with many of the items that came up. And I want to say that Jackie has served our city well and has been an excellent advocate for the children of the, of the Lowell School Committee, School System. And I've also found Jackie to be an extremely passionate individual in her role as an elected official, and certainly as her role as a parent, too. I'm sure that Jackie will continue to be a strong advocate for the importance of offering students a, a quality education. And I wish Jackie and her family the very best in the, in the future. Allison Laraba, I certainly, I haven't always agreed with everything that you have said, Allison, but I, I can honestly say that I, everyone here knows how difficult it is to put your hat in the ring, and very few people actually step up to the plate and run for public office. And certainly for that, I congratulate you for that, and your courage to voice your opinions and your insights in order to improve our schools. And for that, Allison, I thank you very much, and I really wish the very best for you and your family. And John Leahy, I saved you for last, John. You know, it's, again, I, I've been very fortunate to serve with John, worked with him for the last four years, and prior to that, he was my boss for a number of years, too. His commitment to the city and to the schools, and most importantly, to the students, it's been, it's been very evident over his career on the School Committee. His common sense, his humor, has helped this committee get through some very difficult times, and, and I thank John for that. I think more important than that, John, I found him to be a very, to be a good human being and a great family man. And he's going to be sorely missed on this committee, and I wish him the very best and his family. Thank you, John, and thank everyone that, that has served. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Conway. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And let me just say, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, in the, the past two years, we've certainly had a lot of challenges placed in front of us. I can't think of anyone who was better suited to lead us in this time than you were. And I really think that we were particularly lucky to have had someone as steadfast and, and rock solid standing at the podium during these times. And I am extremely appreciative of the, the good counsel that you gave to all of us, and I think you really did a remarkable job of steering us through some very challenging times. And it was always evident that your commitment to this district and to the city as a whole was, was right there on your sleeve in the most genuine way, and I am very appreciative of that. To Allison Laraba, I thank her for her, for her years of service here. I know her commitment to, to the goals that were set forth were absolutely steadfast, and I appreciate the, the genuineness with which she fought her battles. For Jackie Dougherty, who's been my colleague here for many years, it's been, it's been quite a ride. We've gone through quite a few things over these, these past eight years. I think I've found always the ability to understand your perspective and to understand the, the passion, I'll use your word, the passion and the excitement and the enthusiasm you've always had for education here in the city. Again, you know, one of my great kind of benchmarks in terms of public service is to really see the genuineness of purpose, and it was evident in every vote that you took, whether we agreed or disagreed, that you were coming from a very personal place of conviction, and our district is the far better because of the work that you've done. And I've really appreciated having you as a colleague these many years. For Mr. Leahy, the perspective and the insight that you brought to this position and the, the absolute commitment and excitement about everything we did was remarkable. You really are one of those people that it was really a joy to serve with. You were engaged and funny and, and kept us, kind of, kept things in perspective when things were sometimes coming off the rails, which has happened more than a few times. And I for one have been just so impressed with your commitment and really inspired by the way that you've done this job. It's really a remarkable thing to have spent ten years and to have made the difference that you've made, and to do it in a way that was always collaborative, always appreciative and respectful. And I think you really are, you're a real example of the way that public service can be done in a, in a positive and, and encouraging way. For all of the, our colleagues who are leaving, we're better off because you are here. We're better off as individual committee members, and more importantly, our district is better, stronger, faster, because you all gave your time and your commitment to this endeavor. And I appreciate your service and recognize that we'll still be working together in many varied ways over the next few years, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, the School Department, does have a small token of our esteem for your service, but before I, I have the pleasure of giving that gift to all of you, I just want to talk a little bit about leadership in Lowell. This is a city that prides itself on excellence and really having the leadership skills to build the whole community. And that is the reason why people like me will work in Lowell for as long as they're going to work. There has been one constant among, among every member who has served on this committee, and I've said this before in this very seat, that each person came here with the best intentions of children. Have we disagreed? Yes. Have we agreed? Absolutely. But everybody's opinion always was for what they thought was the most important for a young person. And there was never a moment when people hesitated to say, okay, we'll have another subcommittee, or, okay, we'll meet. And people in this room on both sides, we have some weeks spent more to get, more time together than with our families. And so, the passion that you have for this city and serving the youth is something that is commendable, and it does not happen everywhere, and I do not want the whole community to miss that about the work of the Lowell School Committee. They care about children, all of them, in the best way that they know how to defend. And so, I want to thank each- and so I want to thank each of the people who have served, and I do have something from the School Department as a token. And so I'll start with Mr. Mayor. Mayor Melonazzo, I have to look at you because you know how I am. I have served 10 years behind this, one of these seats, and worked with five mayors, and you, sir, have been such an advocate for all of us as deputy superintendent and superintendent of schools. You have allowed the administration to lead in the best way they know how. You've been very respectful of all of our work, and it has been such a joy to work with you, and I wish you unbelievable success and health and happiness through everything you endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, thank you.
Awesome mother, dedicated school committee woman. It has been a pleasure to have worked with you for the last two years. You have expressed your opinions, you've run true, you've been very dedicated to the children of Lowell Public Schools, and for that I thank you, and I wish you the very best. I wish success to you and your son and all in your family for whatever you endeavor. Thank you. I met Ms. Dougherty as a parent in a meeting at the Bailey School, where she was advocating for the future of her young children becoming bilingual, and she had great passion, she volunteered, she definitely cared so desperately, not about her own children but about others, and so she was the first member of the Citywide Parent Council that stepped forward politically and became a member of our school committee. And Jackie, you have served us very well. You have cared about a number of things and followed up on the things of importance, and I know that your family will have wonderful success, and you will have success in whatever you endeavor, and I wish you the very best of everything, and I just want to give you this token of our esteem.
I have to say that I have learned a lot from you. You're an awesome dad. I wish more kids had dads like you. You have tried to defend the rights of children in many different ways, but you have the most respectful way to do that, and I love that personal style. I wish you and your wonderful children, who we have watched grow, excel, and they will be wonderful people. You're a great guy, and we will miss your service, so thank you so much.
Would any of my colleagues be like to heard at this time? Would you like me to say a few words? Or Mr. Leahy, Chair recognizes Mr. Leahy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank everybody here tonight. First of all, before I forget, I want to thank my wife, Joanie, and my three children, Delane, Madeline, and Jack, who like to hear their name over the mic. But without your spouse's support and your children, it's hard to do this job. I just wanted to thank the people I've served with over the years, Mr. Golden, Ms. Fattakani, Mr. M'Donza, and Mr. McHugh, and I'd like to say thank you to all the principals and the staff. It's hotter than I thought. The teachers, the parents, all the administration custodians, they're the heart and souls of the buildings, and I really enjoy the children, and that's the best part of this whole job, as they showed on the video. Without being able to do the pop-in, stop into the schools, you really get to see what's going on in the classroom, and I've really enjoyed that. So I'd like to just say thank you to Ms. Martin, Mr. Leary, Mr. Conway, Ms. Dougherty, Ms. Laraba. And the only thing I'd like to add is that the new committee members, if you didn't get my message yet, try to stop into the schools, it's the best place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy. If you don't mind, I'd like to just, oh, go ahead, Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'm going to try to be brief. I just, I'd like to start by saying what a long, strange trip it's been. I definitely started out as an outspoken parent, as the superintendent mentioned, and I really, I want to thank everybody here in this room and the people of this great city, because it is a great city, and it's a city that I've made my home. My family has put our roots down deep in Lowell, and the people for giving me this opportunity, and like my colleague, I would also like to thank my family. My husband and my children have sacrificed many evenings where dinner was on the table, but Mom wasn't there, and, because being Italian, dinner had to be on the table. And their support and encouragement has been really instrumental in me being able to do this work, and I have to say, I think we are the best urban school district in the state, in a very good state in terms of public schools. We've ranked number one, and that I feel that my opportunity to contribute to positive growth in the district has been very meaningful work for me, more, you know, as, well, the only thing better than that has been raising my children in terms of meaningful work, so I appreciate that opportunity. And when I think back on the efforts that had most meaning for me, they were the things that really directly related to our students, and sometimes they might be small things, like making sure that a student with diabetes gets to go on a field trip, or a student with a hearing aid issue, that we get those resolved, we have a system in place to resolve that are making sure that we have, you know, challenging enhanced math classes at the middle school level for seventh and eighth graders. Whatever the detail was, it's been very rewarding work, and I just want to thank you all for working with me. I think that our greatest strengths in the city, in our schools in particular, is the diversity of our students and the committed and caring staff and administrators we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll also try to keep my comments brief. First and foremost, I'd like to thank my son, Matthew, who, two years ago, said to me, "Mom, you gotta do what you feel like you have to do," and I'm very much appreciative of the fact that he gave me permission to do that, because as a single parent, it's not always easy to put something else above your child. And I want to thank the people of Lowell who put there, trusted me, and elected me, and still supported me. I found this to be a very rewarding experience. Madam Superintendent, you and your staff have just been incredibly professional people and wonderful to work with, and I've appreciated that. And more importantly, I've appreciated the opportunity to really see the inside of the schools. As a parent, when you volunteer in the school, you see your school, but as a school committee member, you get to see all the schools in various shapes and forms, and the work that this district does is incredibly, incredibly impressive. The staff is very good staff, as you well know, and I have to agree with John, the great thing is really watching the kids and seeing them come alive in some of the classes and their teachers, so thank you very much. I'm also going to say thank you to Molly Brown and Rita Petrello, who help support me going through this whole process, and without good friends, you really can't do a whole lot, so I'm a very, very lucky woman. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would indulge me just for a minute, I'd also like to say thank you to my colleagues on the Lowell School Committee. Over the last two years, I have really gotten a great deal of respect for you all, I've enjoyed working with each and every one of you. We have had our challenges, but I think we've met those challenges. I also truly believe and have my entire adult life in the Lowell School System. When I used to work at the Lowell Plan, we started the Lowell Model for Educational Excellence to bring the business community into the Lowell Public Schools, and I think that has helped as well. My wife, she doesn't like it when I mention her name, John, but my wife, Annabelle, as you know, is a schoolteacher in the district, and we chose to educate our daughter Julie. She graduated from Lowell High School, she went on to graduate with honors from Boston College and with honors from Simmons, and she's now a teacher at the Chumsford School System. She's a history teacher, so, again, public education has always meant a lot to my family. My father-in-law was a former principal at the Washington School, my mother-in-law was a teacher at the Maury School, so clearly, we have deep roots in the Lowell Public School. So it has been my honor for the last two years to be the Chair of the Lowell School Committee. I want to wish my colleagues who are leaving the school committee the best of luck, and those coming on, it's going to be hard work, but I know you're up to the challenge, and it's been marvelous to work with Dr. Scott, marvelous to work with Jean Franco and her staff, and I just want to say thank you for the way you treated me over the past two years, so thank you all very much. With that said, I do have a small token of my appreciation to Mr. Leary, who stepped to the plate to serve as vice chair from his colleagues on the school committee, so Mr. Leary. My only caution to you, Mr. Leary, is don't use the gavel, I guess, as much as I did. So, again, thank you all very much, it was a very nice tribute, thank you. Moving on, the next meeting, the next portion of the agenda, the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, December 7th, we have them in our packets. Any questions, comments, Ms. Laraba? Motion to approve by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Leary, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, thank you. Permission to enter, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, to the Durkin Company Incorporated for $17,000 to amend the existing contract for repair and service to a wide range of floor scrubbing machine equipment. Funding will be provided by the School Department Budget, Operations, and Maintenance. To Ms. Deborah Kapkowski for $13,125 to provide professional development to administrators, classroom teachers, and special education staff on key concepts related to balanced literacy instruction and assessment in alternative school settings. Funding will be provided by Title I and Title II A grants. To Ms. Julie Sharette for $8,800 to provide professional development to support new teachers in the Lowell Teacher Academy during their first three years of teaching. Funding will be provided by Title II A grants.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Laraba? Motion to accept, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven years passes.
Thank you. If my colleagues permit, I would like to bring one memorial forward. I know it was not on the agenda, but we had a Lowell High School graduate, class of 2011, tragically was killed over the weekend in California, Dominic Knopp, serving in the United States Marine Corps, and I just think it's very important that this committee recognize Dominic Knopp, and have a moment of silence in darkened chambers. Please rise. Moving on to unfinished business, administrative oversight of Latin Lyceum, Superintendent and Headmaster response, Madam Superintendent, and Mr. Rose Merrick, thank you for being here. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report that you received in your packet on Friday is an attempt to answer all the outstanding issues surrounding the Latin Lyceum program. The first copy that you have was the report that I had submitted the last meeting and talked about, which really went at looking at some immediate changes that looked at a future of answering the motion by Ms. Dougherty, which was the motion that was regarding the oversight of the program, and also a motion by Mr. Leary, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Leary, who was talking about guidance counseling and support for that over time. Also, in your documentation was a plan for the curriculum review that I had discussed in the report. So, I'm going to go to give an overview of the report of the motion by Ms. Dougherty, which was talking about the oversight of the Latin Lyceum program. In this report, Headmaster Rose Merrick correlated the findings report to what his recommendation was. The administration, he went back to the Lyceum report that talked about that the Lyceum teachers were in need of having more common planning time because of multiple testing and whatnot. The plan was, in the lead teacher's role, the teacher is having conversations with the Latin Lyceum teachers to eradicate these conflicts. Also, the lead teacher works with the Director of Curriculum and Staff, who does oversee the program with the supervision of the Headmaster, and so the written documents for those needs will be taken on, and we have a number of them that have been designed and are in place as a result of the study itself. That ongoing change that will be part of the responsibility of the lead teacher with supervision of the Director of Curriculum and the Headmaster. In planning, because the plan was part of this, what course expectations, which is attached in your packet, also the track system. Now, the track system, online software program, that will streamline technical difficulties, and it's actually being implemented by our whole tech team, so if there are any kind of technology work requests, they can be taken care of more efficiently. Another finding in the report was to assure that courses retain their rigor and adequately compensate according to standard. As you know, I'm going to talk in more detail about the curriculum review, which has its first meeting of planning tomorrow, that we're looking at the equity of courses, the rigor, and part of that finding will look at GPA, which we've discussed, as far as continuing it as it is, or in fact, maybe going to, like, responding to parents. The lead teacher does respond to parents or can assist the administrator. However, in issues of major proportion, as we follow in the school district, the Headmaster responds to parents with the help of his designees. The lead teacher can intervene where he has heard things that are happening among the Lyceum parents, and he could then bring it to the level of the Headmaster, but he will help in that. We will never want to question the fact that the Headmaster and his direct reports do not directly assess and intervene in parent issues, but the lead teacher will have some role in that. As far as the records of the Lyceum, the achievements, SAT, MCAS, AP, the Department of Education has a new piece of software, which is actually very exciting, it's something we should begin with children even younger than high school. It is a maintenance of student records. For instance, if you're a young person and you get an award in your freshman year, you can log on to this maintenance program, and almost like a resume builder, so it's a new piece of technology. There's already, some training is going to recur for all of our guidance counselors at Lowell High, so it is the responsibility of the young person to keep these kind of commendable activities and what's happening in their lives, but that's another piece where they can already have a ranking, they can keep a record, excuse me. So, there was a training already with all guidance counselors, it will continue in January 2012. The colleges, the Yale Plan is also keeping the colleges, so a list of all the colleges where students have applied and been accepted is also going to be kept. The guidance support is in the next report, but some of the things that have already happened in, for the immediate response to improve the Lyceum support, is additional guidance counselor is now at Lowell High School. is now at Lowell High School. Um, there's a core course listing that you can see. There's also now a guidance counselor department calendar, um, and their professional development, they have, uh, they're, there's, they've developed a plan of what will happen on release day specifically with the guidance counselors. Um, additionally, um, the differentiated instruction in the college admission process, that the guidance representatives will be on top of that, because now they have the tracking system, they have the calendar, and they're looking at specific students. They also have a, a shared calendar when they're supposed to be meeting with students. So, it's focused, be, as a result of the Lyceum work, but it also is a work for the entire, um, school. Um, the school profile has been developed to describe the Lyceum program. You've seen that. The admission offices from area colleges will be invited to Lowell High School. We also have the letter and the, um, information that has already been determined by the study that will be going out to schools to make sure that the Lyceum program is, in fact, definitely acknowledged by, um, our schools, our accepting schools for young people. And, um, since this is kind of lengthy with all different kinds of reports, I ask if you have any questions or concerns about the first plan.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. Um...
Do you have a question on the Your Plan for College?
I do have a question regarding the Your Plan for College.[703.12][703.12][phone rings] I might borrow yours. Um, is there a way that we can, um, import, like, SAT scores just automatically with that program, so that it just kind of sets up the foundation? Because my concern is just that you have kids that would level of, of follow-up. If there's a way to just automatically send it over and have some kind of identifier between the two, is that something that's possible?
Truthfully, I'm not sure, because I do not know the product well. I can ask the Headmaster, but, um, the companion documentation that young people have to have, I, you know, it's interesting, because this whole track it, the whole track it piece is what is recorded by the youth and their families also. So, I can imagine that it could be on there, but I do not know the product well. I don't know if the Headmaster knows better than I.
I don't know that there's a way to batch-enter the whole school's worth of SATs or a whole grade at one time. We do have a plan to get our counselors working on this. Part of the training that's going to take place in January, to have them working with, sort of on a staggered schedule of each grade, to get them brought up. I mean, right now, this is, like anything technological, the implementation takes a big front load. So, we're going to have to have our counselors spend some time and dedicate some time just to getting current students filled, you know, get their accounts started, opened, and filled. Part of that will be the SAT scores. If there's a way to load the group, we're certainly going to look for it. I don't know if that's part of it or not.
Ms. Laraba?
And actually, if I could ask the Headmaster another, um, question. Sorry.
Sure.
Um, is this a program that we could roll out to the younger grades and, and educate the parents, so that as the kids are going through the system, it just becomes a force of habit that they're, they're doing that?
I'm sure we can show it to them. I don't know if it's capable for younger grades. Um, you know, I, I haven't been to the training myself, so I've, I know a little bit about the skeletal works of it. I've, I've heard from people who have discussed it. I was in a seminar by someone from the Department of Ed talking about it. Uh, it's designed for high school-level students, um, but we can certainly make younger ages aware of it, and the answer may, it may be acceptable to younger grades. I'm not sure. Uh, I do want to point out one thing. The title of it, colloquially, this gets referred to as Your Plan for College, and the, the title of it, in fact, is Your Plan for College. When I was in a meeting with someone from the Department of Ed, he's, he apologized, this was in a meeting of, of urban city principals, he apologized for the title. He said it really should be Your Plan for College and Work, or College and Career, because it does work as a kind of resume builder. Their fo, the Department of Ed's focus is post-high school graduation, so not just college. It certainly is a service for college, but students who are going in the military will be able to make use of it. Students who are planning to just go out and get a career will be able to make use of it. I just wanted to add that note.
Thank you, Mr. Rosemaric. Any other questions on this part of the report? Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Actually, I just, um, going to express some concerns about the report. I appreciate the effort to come back with, um, more about the, in response to the motion, uh, because the memo we got at the subcommittee meeting, uh, wasn't clear about the action items and the accountability piece. And I think there's still a general vagueness that concerns me, um, and there's a lot of responsibility put on the lead teacher position, which is a, a stipend that one teacher will get in terms of numerous, um, unmet administrative needs that have been identified through the evaluation report, such as responsibility for, uh, creating written documents, uh, responsibility for facilitating, facilitating communication between, uh, the teachers and the Lyceum, responsibility for, uh, facilitating communication with the parents and other administrators at the high school. When we asked for whether this had been, uh, put in writing, um, at the subcommittee meeting, we did not have anything, and I don't know if it's been since put in writing. So, that there are very clear expectations, and that the lead teacher is aware of those expectations. Uh, the parent association is aware of those expectations, and, and there's some sense of accountability. So, I think that, although I do see some movement in trying to address, um, the gaps in the administrative needs of the Lyceum program, uh, that the evaluation report identified, which again, as we talked about in numerous occasions, um, you know, the program has really not grown the way we would have expected it would, and that we're looking for, the report was looking for some supports in place to help see that strengthening. Um, so I, I still have some concerns about, um, the lack of specificity, and, and one other area that a lot of weight has been put on is this new software program. The, um, Your Plan for College, it sounds great. I think, as the Headmaster mentioned, there's going to be a lot of startup, um, work, okay, thank you, work that has to be done. And, um, I would just want to make sure that there's going to be some follow-up to make sure that the program is working, that, uh, we are being able to, um, meet the needs of these students, uh, in a way that, uh, will be adequate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I, I, I want to, I want to thank, uh, the Superintendent, uh, and her staff, and I also want to thank the Headmaster and, uh, Dr. Wendy Jack and, uh, and their, their staff, uh, for putting this together. Certainly, there were some, uh, concerns that, um, I think that, um, parents, teachers, administrators had, and I, I certainly see that many of these, uh, situations have been, uh, addressed, and I thank you very much for that. I think, um, again, going forward, uh, I know that whether it's the Lyceum program or any other program, I mean, that's, you know, it's a, it, it's one of the academies, and I think we have nine academies, if I recall, that the staff on both the central and also the high school level will constantly be reevaluating, uh, all those academies and all those programs to make sure that there's, uh, the best education going forward for all the students, for all 3,200 students at Lowell High School. And again, I, I congratulate, uh, I congratulate, uh, the staff by putting this, uh, this together and addressing some of the situations that we had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Anyone else on this part of the report? Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second report, um, part of the report is an answer to the motion by Mr. Leary, asking about the guidance services in, at Lowell High School and what the plan would be. Um, and so, um, in the report, Mr. Rosemaric does not recommend that assigning a single guidance counselor at this time is advisable. Um, he does state in the particular report that a child does have a guidance counselor freshman year, and then they have, uh, the same guidance counselor through the upper class. Um, his concern in the report was getting all of the children, uh, excuse me, the counselors up to speed on what they need to know and be able to do to support the young people. So, as far as the support systems and what will happen in the near future, is that there is a guidance council that's been transferred from the alternative school to the guidance, uh, staff at Lowell High, that the guidance, this particular guidance person is looking at the accuracy of student records and reviewing the student transcripts, um, to make sure that everything is in place. Um, the accuracy of the, the particular transcripts of, are always important, and they're checked on by all guidance counselors, but this person is really going to look at the transcripts of the 12th grade Lyceum students first, then work down to the 11th grade, the 10th, and the 9th grade, because, if they're starting with that group in the high honor group of people, because of the early admission college-type pieces, then in fact, those are the kids who, who, um, get, get the early admittance piece. And so, they are looking at a process of how to get that work done, um, in a way that makes sense. Um, and then, the other cohorts will in fact, you know, 12th grade will then follow. They'll be looking at the transcripts. Um, the calendar, the use of a calendar, and the reason why they're using it is that they're looking at accuracy and meeting deadlines. So, they will all have on this master calendar, um, knowing when colleges, when early admit, early acceptances, and other, I'm sure, key, um, guidance-type issues that have to happen. The, um, calendar will help the counselors with meeting with students. They will also look at, um, the application scholarship dates and whatnot. Um, they can meet together as teams to make sure that they've met the needs of the children. They also have to have a system that they make sure they're meeting with every student. So, that's all part of the calendar and part of the record systems, um, that is moving more towards technology, so it can be checked on in a more complete way. Um, there is a core course listing that is attached here, um, a table of core courses, um, was put here, and the children will understand the expectations. You all know that part of the work that we're doing through the curriculum review and before September, or actually before the end of this year, is that those, uh, curricula for parents are publishable. They're on the website, and we have the consistency of that. And so, these core courses, um, will also be part of that. So, the listing's on the website, and there's course, studies will be added, all the Lyceum courses that you see in this plan. Again, um, the Headmaster alludes to the Your Plan software, and how in fact, the portal will be used to keep information, um, for the future of the children. Um, and this turns into an automatic resume maker, which is really important when kids get out, that they have all the details, and they're not trying to recap their, their lives through files, that their files become alive through this particular piece of software. Um, and the Headmaster also does talk about the training that's going to be involved to maintain these standardized testings and applications, which he talks about in this particular report. The professional development that happens, there is a monthly series of professional development workshops, and the topics will include application techniques, course selection, prerequisites, data to determine college readiness in the financial aid process, and implications in counseling. Also, um, they're talking about using some outside consultants to make sure that they have the most up-to-date, um, kind of, um, systems in place, and the workshops will be on the release day. The remainder of the release day times are here, and there may be extra time that's needed. But getting each of the counselors understanding the comprehensive work for all children at Lowell High School is the goal. I suggest, and I will suggest this in the next report, that each time we meet at the Lowell High School Subcommittee meeting, when that subcommittee is reformed, that we are checking in on how, in fact, these processes are going. So, when Mr. Leary says, "Hey, whatever happened to this Your Plan" thing, that we, he will know when we go to Lowell High School Subcommittee meetings, that this is what's happening on these ongoing kind of supports. Um, same thing with the curriculum study, and that's our plan for that particular area also. Um, Mr. Rosemaric did not sug, he's talking about, um, guidance counseling, he's meeting, meet, meeting weekly with the Headmaster and the Curriculum Director, who is overseeing the Guidance Department at this particular time. He meets weekly with Housemasters, and, um, I know Dr. Jack meets weekly with guidance counselors, but that will also will now be a meeting with the, with the Headmaster and the Curriculum Director. So, they're checking into making sure that this training and this consistency is growing, and they can ta, keep record of it. So, in the training that it's happening and there's consistency. Um, you all know about the complexities of a place like Lowell High School. If somebody's out, what's happening? Are we getting the substitutes? Who's doing the work? Are the kids being met? And so, all of these systems come together, but it's a lot of information tonight, and it's only fair for this committee and the incoming committee for you to know what's happening as we go. So, I think it should be a standing item on the curriculum, I'm sorry, the Lowell High Subcommittee meeting as we go forward. Um, in conclusion, Mr. Rosemaric did not make any definite number of, of guidance courses we should have, because we do not know what the budget implications, but it is the intention of, uh, this administration to get up to standard, depending on the funding that we have, the, the standard of the National Council of Guidance Counselors, which is no more than 250 students to every guidance counselor. And that, we are not at that level. Our kids, our, our counselors have sometimes more than 300 students, and, um, it is something that, one of our casualties of the budget cuts over a long period of time, but that is the standard that I hope we can get to, and it was really not a realistic suggestion for us to tell you how many. We can figure that out by the number of children enrolled. Um, but it is the, the commitment we would like to make to the young people of Lowell High School, and, um, that's, we're, we're not at that level by this point.
Uh, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I, I am thrilled to hear that, uh, there's going to be a focus on, uh, training across the guidance counselors. I have to say, my, uh, personal experience for my son, he had KITC Durkin, um, for a couple of years, and, and he has, uh, Miss Crowell now, and I've been more than pleased with the support that they've given Matthew, and I would love to have every parent be able to say that they're more than thrilled with the support. So, I think, um, you know, if we're having the meetings, if we're having the training session to get everybody up on the same level, um, that would be wonderful, uh, just to, just support-wise. Uh, I'd also have to say that, um, in my experience with the college and career counseling in the last couple of years, in terms of the information that they have coming out, they've taken, um, advantage of the website, they send out emails, um, you know, I know they have a lot on their plate. They're starting to reach out to juniors, which I think is a wonderful, um, extension of the, of their office, because there are a lot of things that kids should be doing in junior year as they're getting ready to, um, hit senior year, but, um, the fact that you're going to concentrate on having that standard, um, just throws me to no end. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Have we finished with the report, Madam Superintendent, at this point? Madam Superintendent?
No, Mr. Mayor, of course not. Um, the last part of this whole report is the curriculum review and the ideas for the curriculum review, because the unanswered question in, and, and the deep-seated, um, issue, in my opinion, is the lack of equity that is, has been articulated by many people, thinking about, is a Lyceum course equal to a high honors, equal to an honors course? We've heard lots of information. And so, the curriculum review, um, is looking at the courses from a standards-based perspective. This study is under the direction of Assistant Super, Assistant Superintendent Claire Abrams. Um, there are members of a team we are forming at this particular, uh, time, including Lowell High School staff, but also, I was at a breakfast with, um, Millsix Community College. We have volunteers from the college, um, STEM people and others who want to be part of that. Parents will be incorporated into this study. We have yet to look at the university. Tomorrow, um, at 2:00 in the afternoon is the first group study. We will have, uh, a, a kind of a, a model of administration, central high school teachers being teams together, so we look at the standards, and we look at the changes in standard-based instruction and the new core curriculum, um, I know what it is. The new core curriculum. Um, so, that is part of the study. So, you all know, there, we're looking at the same procedures we used when we had schoolworks, the school studies, um, for that particular place. We've been in touch with the Department of Education. We've been in touch with the Department of Education. Perhaps the person who's working with us from the department will work with us on this study. So we look at the equity across the board. It's really important that we report out on this as we go, and so I am suggesting the continuation of the curriculum Subcommittee or Lowell High End Curriculum, that again, we report out on the progress of this particular report every time, and the parents. There's got, got to be a way, as we do studies like this, that we report out to the, the community also. So within this particular report, there are, these things are being reported. The last page is really what the outcomes will be. This is a grid that we're looking at, the objectives, the target group, the timing, who's responsible, and what the long and short-term outcomes will be. This is not just, this is a great opportunity, and this did stem from the, from the lyceum study, so I do thank all involved with that for this opportunity, but it's also the beginning of our NEASK self-assessment, because that's going to begin next year. So this curriculum review and us being up to speed will really be very helpful. So I welcome any questions or concerns you may have or suggestions, and thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any comments, questions on the curriculum review? Hearing, Ms. Laraba.
Motion to accept the reported, the reported progress.
Motion to accept the reported, the reported progress. Ms. Laraba, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any other comments or questions? It was a very thorough report. Thank you to both the superintendent and the headmaster. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Thank you. Next item on unfinished business, the JCLE policy revision, request to change code ID to JJIF. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is the document that you had seen at a Subcommittee Meeting. These were the changes to this particular policy from the last meeting, and I will ask Ms. Ann Murphy if she could report out on exactly what the changes were. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. At the last meeting, you voted on the head injury policy and concussion policy. The policy is exactly the same. Since that time, we have received some guidance from the Mass Association of School Committees, and they're recommending that the policy be cited as JJIF, which would then have it fall under athletics as opposed to medical, it's still within the student section. So we're really, I'm just really just asking if you would approve the change to the policy, the citation of the policy, from JCLE to JJIF.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Conway. Comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Ms. Starkey?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeans passes.
Thank you. Do we have any public participations this evening? Hearing none, moving on to the motion section. Motion by Mr. Leahy, ask that the superintendent to arrange for an informational seminar at Lowell High School on the dangers of texting and driving. Seconded by Mr. Leary. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion, last time I'll say this, the motion basically speaks for itself, but if we could look into this, to have this seminar presented for the high school, and I know, Superintendent, that you'll put this task in the trusting hands of Ann Murphy, Assistant Superintendent, it's a very important issue, and a lot of high schools are doing this now, and I think some of the phone companies are actually spot, will come and pay for the whole deal, so it's a, it's worthwhile to have at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Leahy. There was a recent conference, Middlesex Partnerships for Youth came to Lowell, and they did have a session that's already, already designed about texting and driving. There's also other ones that they have, so we can look into that. The Office of Student Services will be on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions regarding the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Under Subcommittee Reports, we do have the minutes from the ad hoc on building naming Subcommittee, approval of the minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, December 7th. I know we did report out, Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Starkey, to accept the minutes as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Just for the record, I had Mr. Perrin as a 6th grade teacher at the Riley School. Reports of the superintendent, any other reports, Madam Superintendent? Under New Business, any new business, convention, conference requests? Under Communications, again, informational, Lowell Telecommunications, Channel 10, broadcast of school committee meetings live on the 1st and 3rd Wednesday of the month, Thursdays at 9:00 PM, Sundays at 2:00 PM, Tuesdays at 10:00 AM. Professional personnel, civil service. Motion by Ms. Laraba? Oh, motion by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Leahy, that we stand adjourned. Again, thank you all very much, and best of luck to each and every one of you. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.